Good evening, welcome to the Bryan City Council meeting. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the May 19 meeting.
So moved.
A second.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Item number three is hearing of public concerns.
Good evening, Bill Matts, resident of Bryan. I'm here this evening to talk to you about the low-speed mobility devices ordinance that you're attempting to put. And the first thing I read as I read the ordinances, the city's desires to regulate the use to protect individuals. It's also in the city's best interest. I personally feel the city of Bryan is profiling a specific group of individuals, and the ramifications of this ordinance is going to do more harm than good for the Bryan youth, their families, and residents. I've heard of a handful of complaints about observations, but how big is the problem really? How many total people actually ride an e-scooter? Haven't heard any of those numbers, but I think it's very small. With the introduction of transportation methods, there are always new potential methods, there's always potential challenges. The evolution of the horse and buggy to the horseless carriage, learning to fly, the intersection of South Main Street and South Street. We have licensed drivers, and it's the highest accident rate in the city. If we want to really get down to it, we could say the highest potential is blue cars. So we're going to create an ordinance to file out that nobody in the city of Bryan can have a blue car. It's not right. The other thing that needs to happen with both your ordinance and your chamber minutes that are posted right now, there's a whole lot of confusion between the definitions that are being used. And as Mr. Bettz alluded to the last week at the last meeting, there's a lot of confusion between the state of Ohio, between ordinances, and things not jiving. I'm not sure if the state of Ohio can get it right, how the city of Bryan council is going to get it right. I'm not sure if the council or the administration is aware, but there was a national campaign by the community and schools called Being Present Matters. The campaign showed a six-foot-tall piece of paper with attendance roll, about the size of Brian Times used to be printed on uptown. That roll contained 15,000 names, chronically absent students that missed 10% or more of school per year. From the laundry list of reasons, one of them was lack of transportation. The school campus is no longer centrally located in the city of Bryan. Not all the students have the option of school transportation, nor do their schedules always meet the transportation that's available to them. We have single-parent, multi-parent families that are not always able to provide mom, dad, cab service. And there's also holes with multiple use, all on different schedules. I feel the use of a scooter gives the youth the initiative to get back and forth to school. They should not be restricted. If the scooter gets the student or the youth off the couch, gets them involved in school, gets them involved in sports activities, we should encourage them to utilize the tools and technologies we have today and let them happen. If we provide transportation to their jobs, be glad they're employed and not hanging out on a street corner. If the city's going to do anything, my suggestion would be a certification class. And these are just random thoughts now. Tell them about the rules on the road. They're never going to read this ordinance. The people you're trying to curtail. The other thing with this is even the agenda for today, you have electrical personal assistance mobility device. That's 4511-5 or .512. Today, I don't know if you caught it or not, but the chief of police from Montpelier put out a Facebook post that just exploded because they made the statement that nobody under the age of 16 would be able to use their e-scooters. The problem is 4511.512 is for a Segway. The low-speed mobility microdevice is 4511-514. There is no age limit on that. There's an age limit if you rent one from a vendor, but there is no age limit on the rider. There's no restrictions for a helmet. My suggestion to council would be to scrap this ordinance altogether, let the state of Ohio's ORC codes fall into play as they will. Let's figure out how to either do a certification class with rules of the road, safety, maybe a short test, maybe even a laminated certificate like a driver's license. Send the parents a notification that their student or their youth had completed the course with their test results and a copy of the ORC rules. And maybe let it happen twice a year, August and February, before school starts and right after Christmas. A lot of these kids have been gifted these scooters because that was on their wish list. Some of the kids have had the fortune of family members meeting them halfway. You work halfway, I'll buy the other half. Some kids have bought them on their own. If you go out to Walmart right now, before any tariffs are in place, you can buy an e-scooter in the range of $150 to $350 off the shelf and walk out the door with it. They're all within 100 to 300 watt motor capacity, not very powerful at all. All the things that you're citing and specifying and profiling as an e-scooter can happen with a man-powered scooter. And even 4511.01 says is propelled by an electric motor or human power. So as Mr. Harstler referred to last week, let's not punish the kids. They're using the technology they have. So you ban the e-scooters, they turn around, they'll figure out something else to ride. I'd love to see them show up in their John Deere tractors, their lawn mowers, and anything else that they can legally drive.
Good evening, Dustin Slockter. Great job on that. I am not quite as prepared, but I can tell you about, excuse me, a situation that happened over about 30 years ago. And I won't tell you about the guy's name exactly, but his dad did work at the city at the time. And in front of Portland Manor, we were running across the street, and he was faster than me, and he happened to run in front of a car, which caused an accident. And while we were sitting on the curb waiting for the police to show up because the car got rear-ended, these things happen. Accidents happen. So could this happen with an e-scooter? Is there going to be accidents that happen, potentially? But as far back as you all were kids also, accidents were happening. I live in the country, I don't really have a dog in the fight in this, except I do bring my kids to town, and they get to go scoot around town with their friends. And that's what kids do these days. They're just being kids. And so I'm not really sure where this came from. But in 20 years, are we going to be sitting here complaining because nobody wants to come back to Bryan, Ohio and raise their kids? Are we being progressive or are we recessive? What is moving this community forward? Is this the best use of our time as leaders of this community to have this conversation to say, hey, we shouldn't be letting scooters in town? Most of the kids that are in this group of young adults or young kids that have scooters are using it to get to sports. They're leaving the school. They're generally good kids. So maybe there needs to be a course or something for them. We live in the country. I had to teach my kids how to cross the road because the first time I brought my kids to town years ago, they didn't know how to cross the road. We learned to ride four-wheelers and dirt bikes in the country, but we didn't have to teach them how to cross the road. So I have to teach them the rules of road when they have scooters. And so I look for this community to continue to be progressive instead of making rules up to take away the ability for these kids to get around. This is just how they, it's just like a cellphone. It's not going away. Scooters aren't going away. I bought them for my kids because that's how they communicate with their friends. They get around and they ride to school, they ride to practice with their friends, and they're out enjoying it. They're not on some sort of electronics in the home and wasting their time sitting in their closets or whatever. But maybe we could use your position and platform to be progressive. Think ahead. What can this community do to move forward? Maybe we should be using that time to think about how to make it easier to build buildings and bring business into town instead of having conversations about we shouldn't let our kids drive scooters around. So I think that our time could be better spent than having this conversation. And so appreciate you letting me come in and have this conversation today.
Thank you.
I could say one more thing. I also had the opportunity to talk to one of the fast food managers, and I said, how do your people get to work? And he says, well, in a variety of ways. And I says, do any of them use e-scooters? He says, yeah. I says, do any of them use electric bikes? He said, yeah. I says, why do they use the electric bikes? And he says, well, they have a driver's license, but they can't afford a vehicle. They can't afford the insurance. So once again, we're back to the technology and the tools today to get people into employment and making money, and we don't need to take that away from our, you know, I'll say 12 to, or 14 to 15-year-olds, 16-year-olds that maybe don't have their license yet.
Thank you. But that will go on to item number four, or option number four.
Let's see. Ordinance number 28, 2025, an ordinance authorizing the clerk treasurer to issue change order number one for the project known as alteration to Bryan Fire Department.
Good evening, council. Just briefly speak to this. While we were moving it door, we found that one of the wires, that everything else went over the ceiling, we had one ran right down the wall. So we had some electrical changes that needed to be made that were not anticipated beginning of the project, and that's what this change order covers.
Move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I move to approve. And I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Item number five, an ordinance, John, please number and read.
Ordinance number 29, 2025, an ordinance creating a committee of the whole structure for committees of Bryan City Council.
Council, you're being presented with an ordinance that Mark Fischel came to the last meeting to discuss with you regarding committee of the whole. If you so choose to pass this or have a first reading, obviously that's your decision. But if you do pass it, I would ask that afterwards you motion to determine who the chairperson of each committee, which are listed in this ordinance are, and have those discussions this evening as well, just so administration knows who to contact should there be a need for a budget or wage or revolving loan fund, those kind of conversations.
I'd like to do just a first reading because Rick Hoopie's not here.
Sure.
And I really think we should have him part of this discussion.
Perfect.
I think it could help get people, get some feedback from folks to see what their thoughts are on this.
It's fine with me. I was going to nominate Rick for all of the committees.
There was that joke.
Well, that's what I was going to do, John, so.
Kind of you guys to not do that.
Yeah.
No, that's fine, Mary. I'm fine with that.
Nope. Okay. Perfect.
So are we able to go on to item number six then?
Yep.
John, please read item number six, which is an ordinance.
Ordinance number 30, 2025, an ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the city of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2025, and declaring emergency. And the item in this ordinance pertains to the next ordinance, which we're going to have Mr. Wheelon explain.
Love to. I'm asking for money, plain and simple. A few months ago, we had passed a resolution to assess properties for improvements, which was Autumn Chase subdivision. And we actually received bids for that project, and the bids came in lower than we expected. We met with the developer again today to make sure everything was acceptable to them with the dollar figures and on potential, how long it was going to take to pay off the assessments, which was 10, 15, or 20 years. And we'll get to that a few months down the road when we do the final certification on that. But this basically is the appropriation because we did not budget money for this project because we didn't know what it was going to cost. So I'm asking for a $460,000 appropriation to cover the cost of the project, which will be the next ordinance.
Well, I move to suspend. I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
And I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes. Item number seven, an ordinance, John, please number and read.
Ordinance number 31, 2025, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Bryan Excavating LLC for the project known as Autumn Chase Phase Four Improvements.
Extremely happy with the bid price on this. We had two bids, as you saw, 459, 953, and the other one was 551, 371. Quite a gap between them, but that's such as bidding. We're happy with the price, happy with the contractor, and we have deemed that the lowest and best bid. I would request you suspend the rules and allow me to execute the contract, and we will have this completed in the street end by, I'd say, October and November, ready for lots to be sold and homes to be built. So make a nice 11-lot subdivision for the city.
You said October.
I'd say it'd be done by October, at the latest. The completion date, I think, is November 1st, just because seating needs to be completed by then, the asphalt plan's closed by then. So, you know, yeah, with executing this, we'll get the contracts around, and the earliest they could start would be early July if it's in a schedule. But that gives them July, August, September. It gives them four months, which is ample time for a project this size.
Well, I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
And I move to approve. And I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, an ordinance, John, please number and read.
So a reminder, this is the third reading, as amended, of ordinance number 19, 2025, an ordinance creating check for 377 of the Bryan codified ordinances to regulate use of low-speed micro-mobility devices.
Did you guys want to start discussion? I mean, I'll go back to the initial part of this was honestly the police department, parks department. Yeah, Captain Mendez, I would love for you to go to the podium and speak. Did you break yourself today?
No.
Okay. Don't be nervous.
Well, this is such a hot topic. I think we're losing sight on this whole thing.
Yeah. Do you want to explain a little bit outside of Mr. Kozlak bringing it to our attention, like why we got together?
Okay, so.
To start the conversation.
Talked about earlier, there was a couple, there was some complaints. And the complaints were basically, we were watching, as a whole, people were seeing kids riding three on a scooter, all standing behind one another, holding weights. I mean, there's some were riding three, some were riding two. Then they were riding in the roadway. We had driving complaints where they were shooting in front of cars. Yes, that's, all that stuff happens. I agree with the two gentlemen that talked earlier. But it was just supposed to be basically for the safety of the kids, not to ban e-scooters at all. So I don't know where that came from.
I don't either. It's not in the ordinance.
Correct. And so the mayor, being concerned for these kids, was saying, should we tweak something? Because there is, and again, sir, you're correct, there is an ORC that says, under low-speed micro-mobility devices, 4511.514 does address this already. But as a city, we can be a little bit more restrictive. And it was just basically making sure that the kids weren't riding two or three on a scooter, and to make sure they had the proper lighting on it, and maybe even throwing in on a helmet once in a while. But I think it's kind of gotten so, I don't know how to say it, convoluted, that people are now interpreting it as we're going to ban them. People are thinking that we're going to put so much restrictions on them. I've read the most recent, we've gotten even more restrictive, where we're now breaking it down to level one, level two. I mean, I think we're losing the fact that this was supposed to be just for the protection of the children.
Well, I think part of the discussion too was, you know, the red reflector, the light at night, the no multiple people on one device. I don't know many parents that would actually argue if they knew their kid was riding one scooter with three kids on it, they'd want us to stop them and say, hey, you can't do that, right? Or if you see them going from sidewalk to sidewalk and crossing intersections without stopping or looking right or left, I think, you know, probably be okay. So the intent was to get with the SROs before school got out with this and have some educational pieces, whether they do that in mass conversation in the cafeteria when the kids are in there. So it was more meant, intended to be a safety educational conversation.
Correct.
I can about assure you, and I love the idea of a class, but I'm looking at our police captain, and he's probably like, please don't make us do that. Like, don't add more things to our day-to-day life. Because we've added a lot of stuff to police with AmpliTheater and Lincoln Park and all these things that are going on. So I think.
Yes, so the SROs were ordered to create, when this is done, they were ordered to create a lesson plan where they would teach in the schools, right when school starts, and then again at the end, right before summer break. So that way they could be educated on what they have to do, what they cannot do. I don't really, I'm concerned if we make this so complicated, the kids aren't going to be able to understand it. And honestly, the mayor's correct. The officers are going to be confused, and the officers are going to have to determine, okay, is this kid 13 or is this kid 15? Is this, is this a scooter that's under this power level or that power level? I don't think we want to keep stopping kids when they're riding on it to ask them how old you are or what the level of the scooter is.
But you don't need to do that. And I also want to challenge the comment that it's more restrictive. The level one and level two is less restrictive. It now opens up for kids below 16 years of age to be able to ride e-scooters. Not more restrictive, it's less.
But all with due respect, sir.
They already can.
With all ready due respects, sir, they can already.
The difference between the level one and level two is only based on the fact of power, speed.
But you're talking about e-bikes, because there are three different types of e-bikes.
Correct, sir.
So if you're talking about e-bikes, that doesn't even fit into this conversation of e-scooters. I mean, there are a variety of e-scooters that are out there. There are e-scooters that are entry-level ones, there are off-road e-scooters, there are e-scooters that are designed for long distances, there are e-scooters that are designed for short distances. I mean, there, but there's no tier in regards to it. And, I mean, that's, my concern has always been that, sorry, that my students can make it to school, you know? We had football camp, and I walked out of the fieldhouse, and there were five, six e-scooters parked right there. That's how those kids are getting to football practice, that's how they're getting to swim practice, that's how they're getting to open gyms. But again, there is nothing in 4511.514 that says anything about an age limit.
Correct.
Well, there is, as it relates to renting, not owning.
But we're not talking about renting.
Your comment was, there's nothing in there. There is about renting. You cannot rent to someone 16, under the age of 16. So the state legislature decided that that was also a problem area, and they did not want to take that on. So they said locally, if you want to do something that also restricts age, that's up to you. We're going to restrict the rental age. The other thing is, one of the things that I'm concerned about is the timing of this. Nobody know, I have, I heard the mayor said she did. I emailed Jim Hoops and have not heard back yet as to the update of the low-speed micro-mobility device that's supposed to take effect 6:30, 25. That's in three weeks.
That's a different code, sir.
It's been, I've had it confirmed that was Segway. And those are much faster than the 20 mile an hour.
That's not the same thing.
You probably haven't heard from Jim because they're trying to pass a budget down at the state.
No. If it's just applying to Segways, then they're going to keep what they currently have for the e-scooter. Is that what you're saying?
The old language, the original language is what they're going to do.
Yeah. So if that's, if that's the case, then from my perspective, the issue becomes one of how do you balance community, which is what we've heard today, community enjoyment with community safety? And I don't know how you do that when e-scooters now have a, what makes it complicated is the fact that you can buy an e-scooter that's 100 watts, up to 300 watts, that goes anywhere from eight to 20 miles an hour, okay? You can also buy an e-scooter that costs $2,000 to $4,000, that is 5,000 to 750 watts, which goes 40 miles an hour. Are we saying there is no differentiation of a nine-year-old versus a 16-year-old with the e-scooter availability of that? Do I think there's going to be a bar of them? No. Do I think parents want to do what's best and probably would not get that high of a speed e-scooter for somebody? Probably. But what was being proposed was two levels based on that, and it's a purple and gold insignia that the SRO can put on it, once they see that anybody can ride an e-scooter. I think when I wrote this, it was 250 watts, which is what it is now. So there is no age restriction on that. But if it's going to be higher than that, that gold level, then I think they need to be 16. That was what, the only differentiation. I never, it was actually in the proposal that stated, I have no expectation on the police to do anything different than what they're doing now, which is if they see something that is unsafe, they would investigate. The only thing the ordinance does is give you the authority to either talk more with the child, the parent, or invoke the misdemeanor charge. That's all the ordinance does.
Okay. If I may, your reference to the higher-rated ones and the faster ones, I have yet to see anything like that. But what our code is referring to is called low-speed micro-mobility devices, which is also, they refer to the 4511 section, which is the ORC.
But they do not differentiate that.
But they do, sir. They do. In the definition of the ORC, low-speed micro-mobility device, it's defined in the ORC as a device weighing less than 100 pounds and has handlebars, is propelled by an electric motor or human power, and has attainable speed on a paved surface of not more than 20 miles per hour when propelled by the electric motor.
Google e-scooters that are 100 pounds and under, you'll find that there are now e-scooters in the last two years that are going 40 miles an hour.
But then, sir, I would say that then even our code doesn't even, our code is referencing the 45.
Our code means the ORC.
The ordinance that we're talking about today isn't even referring, it's referring to the 4511 section, which is the low-speed micro-mobility devices.
Yes.
If that's what we're following, then I look that up in the definition of the ORC, which I just read.
Yes.
So it refers to 20 miles per hour.
It refers to, that's what they are expected to go when this was written January of 2021. They are now going higher than that and are under the 100 pounds. That's what I'm trying to state, is that things have changed, and if they're not going to change at the state level, then I think we need to at least address that at a local level to foresee reasons, allowing enjoyment for the kids to still be able to get to practice, get to work, but in the same sense, not create other issues. The issues that you started off with were the ones that I've heard from multiple people and physically seen as a bus driver, both in and out, actually going through red lights to and three on a, and just the other day, the last day of school, one hand, backpack and the other, instead of on the back. So, I mean, it's those things that I think that can be taught by the SRO. I don't want to punish them. I just want them to be able to operate it safely. That's all I'm trying to get to, to a consensus that we balance the community enjoyment with the community. the community safety. That's, that's all.
But I'm going to say this, as a kid, I had a person on the, the bars on the back, whatever those, were the nuts. I had a person there, I was on my seat, and then I had a friend sitting on the front handlebars. I mean, thank goodness the police in Delaware never pulled me over for that, if that was a thing, because that's sometimes, that's how we got home. I see, when we left council last week, I watched two adults run the traffic light at the intersection of Union and High, and those were on bicycles. I, I, we're getting hung up into this thing on e-scooters, it's always going to change, there's always going to be a new definition, things are going to get lighter, things are going to get more powerful, but not mean to be picky, that's going to fall into the hands of the parents to decide whether they're going to get their child an e-scooter that's going to go down the street at forty-some miles an hour. That, that's the parent hand. I think it's a great idea that, you know, it's been suggested, we have our SROs talk to students in the fall, we have our SROs talk to students in the spring. It's, it's a good thing that we are getting out there, trying to get our students to understand safety. I wouldn't want to see anybody ride a scooter into an intersection, I wouldn't want to see, you know, against the traffic light and get hit, but those things, those are all bad things. But, to turn around and come along and say that, well, we need to adjust the age and so forth, I mean, if I had, if I had the need, I don't have the need. I have the luxury, I have the luxury of having people in my house who can get my thirteen-year-old granddaughter to summer PE. But I can tell you, at other points in my life, I've told my son, when he was the same age, ride your bike to swim practice at Moore Pool. And are you telling me that putting him, telling him to ride a bike is safer than an e-scooter?
Yes.
No, I don't agree with that.
Well, look at the physics of it, Steve, look at the physics of it.
You know, and as a parent, I put a helmet on him, and so I make sure he has a helmet. That's my, again, that's me as a parent telling my son, I want you to wear a helmet. I've crashed my bike enough times, I want you to wear a helmet.
What about, what about a skateboard? I mean, skateboards can go how fast? With no, with no engine on them?
Correct.
What's the difference?
I, you know, I agree with Steve.
Electric skateboards with no handlebars.
The difference in a bike versus an e-scooter has to do with stability, speed, acceleration, and braking. Anybody who's ever skied, water skied, have, do you start with slalom, or do you start here? You start there because you're more in balance. Bikes, you're more in balance, and you control the speed, and you don't hit a button and take off and hit ten to fifteen miles an hour in a couple of seconds. So, there is differences between, that everyone recognizes, and I've read, that there's a difference between a bike and an e-scooter, and it mostly has to do with power, acceleration, and stability.
I've, you know, I've done my due diligence over the past two weeks, you know, I've, I've watched, went down Wilson, went down all the roads, all I saw was bikes. I saw a couple of e-scooters, nobody, but, but, I'm like, I totally agree with Steve. I mean, this is, an e-scooter is a, is a, is a bike for, for the new age, it really is. And my, my original comment about doing something with e-bikes, e-scooters, whatever, is Main and High. You know, don't do it. If you're, if you're going to be on Main and High, have lights, reflectors, whatever, you know, that's it. I don't, I, yeah, I have no issue with e-scooters, I have no issue with e-bikes. You know, if you're going to ride on those, these roads, you're, it's at your risk.
I think your initial conversation wasn't even e-scooters, it was...
Yeah.
A freewheel bike that was electric, that was, you were...
It had no lights.
Sitting it at night, yeah. Or it's...
No, he was...
It was a safety thing of, how do we get people to put lights on if they're going to be out before it's...
Yeah, make it street legal-ish, you know, like a motorcycle. I mean, that, that's, that was all I was talking about.
There's an ordinance for lights on bicycles.
Yeah.
Why not have them on these as well? For the safety of the children when they're driving at night.
Same way with golf carts, you know, you got to have all that, all the identifiers, you know, because I don't trust people on the road. And Bryan, Main Street, High Street, Wilson Street, it's busy, and people don't watch. And, you know, I don't want anybody to get killed either.
Absolutely.
But, again, I don't want to take people's freedoms away, and, and I don't think this is a legislative thing to, to move forward, especially since the states already got their thing going on.
I agree with you.
And fifty, and forty-five eleven five one four has that piece about, about lights.
Yeah.
Both the front and the back.
I think it's a responsible thing.
Yeah.
And do we need an ordinance for that? None. Yes, maybe? Or is it just, it's just, it's just education at this point?
Honestly, the first section, A, I do think everything is in the state code, because we've had that conversation, too.
Correct, sir.
It's this subsection, point oh-three, where they can't be on streets with speed limits higher than twenty-five, no more than one rider on an e-scooter, no one, they have to use both hands, and no zigzagging and weaving, and the person shall not operate an e-scooter on High and Main unless they're at an actuated traffic signal, similar to what we do.
But I would say nobody...
But this does have, this has that provision of under sixteen, because as you recall at those two meetings ago, or whatever it was, that state code was presented, but we have had it confirmed multiple ways that it was for Segway rentals in the big cities, which are much faster scooters.
And I would say that piece about this cannot weave or zigzag, that applies to anything. I don't care whether it's skateboard, whether it's a bicycle, you know, whatever it is. I mean, nobody should be...
Just, just to finish what I wanted to say was, if, if we're going to do this, I would suggest we reflect the ORC, the Ohio Vice Code. It's the simplest, it keeps it basic, and it keeps it so everyone understands what's going on. If we want to add more restrictions, I mean, we can add in there the no more than one person riding at a time, or, you know, I just don't want to go into great details and all these restrictions for these kids to have to try to understand what they're supposed to be doing. That, that's all I got.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I mean...
The other thing I want to add, which was part of the conversation with the chief and the captain and I, is if it's under state code and we do not adopt it under our ordinance, if they do ticket a juvenile, all that money will go straight to the state, it won't come back to our law enforcement because it's not deemed a local code. So, that was another reason that we were bringing this ordinance, but this is, this ordinance that you're looking at tonight has been amended a bunch of times, and I honestly don't have the original nineteen in front of me to know what's changed and what's not. So, I don't, I don't want to make you feel pressured by anything, we can revisit this at any point or not, but our initial intent was more educational safety for the kids than anything else, and to get something into ours so that we got the local court fines should we have to cite a kid, and also so that the SROs had a very good guide as to what they were going to talk to the juveniles about on stopping at stop signs, not weaving around, don't have three of your best buddies on here on all the bars because they're a little faster than bikes most days. Your call.
I say we just table it.
I agree.
I agree.
Do you want to table this one, or, because, or do you want to vote it down, or do you want to go back to the original nineteen?
I, for me personally, I think we just vote it down.
Do we, if we vote it down, we go for, we're with the ORC?
Yeah.
Yes.
Then I would recommend we vote it down.
We don't get any of their refund, is that what I'm hearing, but we're there?
Yeah. Like there would, any court fines...
You're cutting revenue from the city.
You're going to cut that much?
I'm not.
I don't know.
Probably not.
I'm, I'm making a point, I'm not...
I get that. No, I get that.
It's going to be that much money.
Yeah. I think Ms. Slade was pretty clear about that, but I'm, that's not going to be a deciding factor for me.
You know, again, if it becomes an issue, it becomes an issue, and we revisit it.
Mm-hmm.
Right? I mean, it, it is what it is, but, yeah, I don't want to restrict anybody, this is...
How are you going to be able to tell how fast they're going anyways? Are you going to be able to tell?
We have radar.
I joke when I'm nervous, I'm sorry.
So, are you going to ask for a motion either way?
So, the options are, it is a third reading, so you've got to either table it or take action on it. So, you can table it, and it can stay on the table forever, or you can bring it back at any time, or the alternative is someone would have to make a motion, I guess it could fail for the lack of emotion or lack of a second, or if it got a motion a second, you'd take the vote and it, it either passes or fails, but...
What should I say, what, what would I say to get it to a vote?
Motion to pass and then vote it down.
And vote it down?
Yeah.
All right.
Or say silent, I know, that's what I was trying to...
That's my position, that's the direction I would like to go.
Somebody's got to either stay silent or say the words, sorry. Like, you make a motion to.
I make a motion to vote on this, or...
I think you have to say it.
To approve.
I make a motion to approve.
To approve what?
The voting on this?
Ordinance nineteen.
All right.
Voting it down?
I don't want to approve.
I could, I could, I can, I'll second it, then we all vote no if we don't want.
Okay.
I'll second.
That's exactly right.
That's what has to happen, again, I guess.
So, because it's a third reading, we don't have to suspend anything.
I'm confused. I'm confused, what are we voting on?
So...
To approve this.
Ordinance number nine.
To approve what?
Ordinance number nine is amended.
Amended, or it's number nineteen.
The one that Mark just gave us?
Yeah.
Yes. That's the one that's on the agenda.
Give me a minute.
You can...
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have to come back up a little bit, though, so don't go far.
So, if we vote to approve this, the last version of Marx, then what?
Then it would go into effect.
Okay.
And if they vote to not approve it, then it just goes away.
But I had to put it forward for approval so we can vote on it.
And I second this.
That's triggered me up.
Yeah, sorry.
No, no, I appreciate the time.
So, the roll call is Steve?
No.
Jim?
No.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
No. So, are we good to go on to item number nine?
Sure. As soon as John gets done with this stuff taken.
Yep, we're good.
Now, please read item number nine, a resolution.
Resolution number thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, a resolution to authorize the appointment of city engineer Brian Wheeling to the Williams County Regional Planning Commission.
So, the original Williams County Planning Commission was created, I believe, in nineteen seventy-eight with a thirty-one-member board, multiple township, multiple city, multiple village people, nobody's showing up anymore, so the board has decided to restructure down to an eleven-member board, one city, two village, a couple of township, and a couple of elected officials. So, the city is keeping our seat, I'm just requesting that you reappoint me for a three-year term to this board with the mayor as the alternate.
I move to suspend.
Second.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
And I move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number ten is a resolution, now, please number and read.
Resolution number thirty-two, twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the police chief of the city of Bryan to apply for a grant for the city of Bryan Police Department.
Clearly not the chief. So, this is a state grant that will reimburse us up to a certain amount, I'm not clear on what that amount is yet, but, we're, the police department, for one thing, needs a new server, which is crazy expensive, so we're going to try to put that on this grant, and a couple other things that we, we were hoping to replace in the police department and gear. So, I'm asking for permission to apply for this grant, see if we can't get some of that.
Motion, suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the items on the agenda around the room. Mayor, do you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
John, do you have any? Department has anything?
Mean old fire chief.
Yeah, mean old fire chief, correct.
Is it fireworks time?
Fireworks time.
Yes, yes.
We, we did have an incident during Memorial Day weekend, which is part of the state days that could be legally shot, however, council did pass an ordinance that it is prohibited within the city limits, so we'll do this as a formal advice to all the public, once again, in the city of Bryan, fireworks discharge is prohibited. Thank you.
Thank you.